Everybody, Great Lakes here and it's been brought to my attention that there's an individual running for city council in Santa Fe, Texas, who is a little less than cordial to citizens. Good citizen news, did a story, just a fire department out there and an individual just kind of freaked out and was pretty nasty to him, pretty rude, ended up quitting his job because of it all. Tony Dauphine, D-A-U-P-H-I-N-E, is running for city council as is six other people. So what did I do? I called them all up, had a conversation with four of them, two didn't answer with the voicemail, left them a message. Be nice if they return it, hopefully they do and if they do, I'll update it. But here are the phone calls with very small minor edits, muting out phone numbers because accidentally said one out loud and I'm trying to like punch it in, you know? And another one, someone asked me, "What number did you call?" So there's gonna be a couple, just a few moments where just a little bit of redaction, but that's for their sake. And let's go guys, let's have a, uh, let's see how these people do. There's four of them. Rusty, Ryan, Terry, Christine. And then I spoke to the other two, I wasn't able to, so. Let's go guys, here's the conversation, it's about an hour long, strap in, it's some, not what you expect, I promise you that.
Hello?
Hi, is Tony available?
May I ask who's calling?
My name's Aaron, I'm with the Constitutional News Network and I'd like to talk to him about the city council runoff that he's a part of.
He's not available right now.
He's unavailable right now?
No.
No, it sounds like, it sounds like Tony, is this Tony? How rude. He doesn't even want to talk about him running for city council. Tsk tsk, Tony, tsk tsk, sir.
Tell me phone, leave a message, I'll call you soon as I can.
At the tone, please record your message. When you've finished recording, you may hang up or press one for more options. To leave a callback number, press five.
Alright, this is Aaron with the Constitutional News Network, I think our call dropped. I was calling to talk to Tony about the election coming up, tomorrow being the last day of the vote, wondering what, if he has any words for the people that would of Santa Fe that he would help encourage them to go out and vote, and what then to vote for him, you know? Just trying to get the information out there, giving all the candidates a chance. Please give me a call if you would like, 419. Thank you, have a great day and good luck.
Hello?
Hi, my name is Aaron, I'm with the Constitutional News Network, is this Rusty?
Yeah.
Hi Rusty, um, I'm asking all people running for city council, all three, seven of you guys, I'm trying to call everybody up, asking questions about why the people of Santa Fe should vote for you. What, what would you offer them that it'd be, would be special for you to do it?
Well, I've lived here all my life. I've seen the good times of this city and I've seen the bad times of this city. And we're on, you know, we're growing now. Houston's caught up with us. And it's time for the, you know, correct type of growth.
When you say Houston's caught up with us, what do you mean? I, I grew up in Houston, Jones Road in nineteen sixty.
Yeah, I mean, Santa Fe used to be the country, Santa Fe's not the country anymore.
Right.
Uh, and you have a lot of new people, you know, you have a lot of people coming in here. Yes, they, uh, you know, and a lot of the citizens think that all the money and all the growth is being spent on the new people coming into town, take care of them and they're getting left out.
Gotcha.
I don't want to let, you know, the hometown people, people that have been here, they, they need a voice in city, not just the people that's under that water car.
Gotcha, so it's not about attracting people, it's about attracting, retaining and helping everybody, not just the people that are coming to bring jobs and stuff like that.
Exactly, and I'd like to educate the people on the appraisal district, our appraisal district system's out of control.
Oh!
And I'd like to hold town halls. You know, next year when everybody gets there, in there on Facebook bitching, hollering and screaming, you know? Get the tax assessor down here, get Cheryl Johnson down here, get some of her staff down here, teach these people, you know, so. They feel like they're not getting taxed out of their homes, at least they have a voice.
Right.
Uh, because that's the feeling right now, is people are getting taxed and the appraisals are getting so high on their, on their houses and on their land. You know, they get in their sixties and all, and they're gonna give it to their kids or whatever, or in their seventies. And the kids don't want it because they don't want to pay taxes on it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
You know, because it's not going to be grandfathered no more, and they don't want to pay taxes on it because the appraisals are, you know, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars an acre. Well, that person has got eight, ten acres.
That's a lot.
A developer, a developer, uh, buy that land pretty quick, and that's what's happening all over Santa Fe.
Really?
You see little, uh, PID's going up everywhere on these little subdivisions and, uh, you know, we need to, we need to have controlled growth, we need to have our growth in the right spots. We need to have taxable businesses, uh, that give us sales tax in Santa Fe, along the main thoroughfare. You're gonna see six forty-six grow, you're gonna see seventeen sixty-four grow. And this back in your team, the Economic Development Committee, yeah, half a year ago, they had a four million dollar set in their bank account. You know?
What'd they do with it?
They're sitting there, they got a half cent, it's back in twenty, I want to say twenty eighteen, we had, uh, we gave them a half cent in the tax rate. Well, they just bankrolled that. And they did, you know, stuff like, oh, we want you to, we'll help you, give you a grant, you know, if you clean up the face of your building, put some Wayne Scope or shit like that on it, you know?
Lipstick on a-
Instead of going out there and, you know, they had some money, go out there and grab some of these nice pieces of land, you know, in the middle of town, grab that seven acres, grab that eight acres, buy it, entice business to come to Santa Fe.
Yeah.
You've got, you've got the land. You want an HEB, nobody wants to fuck with that piece of shit, you know, that's down there on warpath because of the rental situation and all. And HEBs, you know, they can't grow any bigger there, buy a piece of land, that's your incentive, you've got it. You've got the HEB there, then you get the great clips, then you get the, uh, you know, the Marcos pizza, whatever.
Yeah, where I live here in Northwest Ohio, I live here now, um, the city will buy up land and they'll sell it to these companies coming in for like dirt cheap.
Just to have them built there.
Exactly, just this, the tax revenue alone from income tax.
You gotta think about it, is your employees are gonna go eat lunch in the town.
Yep.
You know, and that's what Santa Fe doesn't have, Santa Fe doesn't have any industry. Santa Fe had some kinda, you know, I said it before, uh, say Aaron's or Cabo, you know? They came here and made a lawnmower blade plant. You know how much money that brings in Santa Fe? Santa Fe needs something that they can, is taxable in this town.
Yeah.
Realtor's office, a realtor's office, that's the biggest job in Santa Fe. Realtors don't pay no taxes, they don't pay any sales tax.
No.
You're not getting anything off that building other than the property tax. Your school district, it's the biggest employer in Santa Fe, they don't pay no taxes. Uh, the probably, the city's probably next, you know where I'm going?
Absolutely makes sense.
You're putting so much of a pressure on the citizen.
Yeah, the tax burden solely on the citizens versus being able to have some of that buffered by business.
It gets to a point where, and the, and the value of the, you know, land is selling out here. You know, you get to a point where you're sitting there going, well, you know, man, I gotta pay, I gotta pay twenty thousand dollars in taxes on January thirty-first. Why do I do that for five years, that's a hundred thousand dollars. Man, I could sell my place for this much, for five hundred thousand, I'm gonna save that, I can move up in the hill country, I can move up around Conroe, you know, wherever you want to go.
Exactly, you can go live down by the beach, you know, for some decent money.
Yeah, I mean, and, and just be done with it.
Yep.
You know, go get ten acres somewhere, put your cow on it, say, yeah, you go let you to live.
That's right.
You know, but, uh, that's what I'm being, just, I've been here all my life, you know, I give back, uh, I give my time back, I'm on the park sport. Uh, I don't miss say an event, right now I'm doing the, uh, clear, the, cleaning the base pass up over there at Barringer Tully, the old baseball field, because the city acquired that, we're gonna make a park out of it and stay busy. I, I like, you know, I know the people, I know these last names, uh, you know, when I see them in council, when I see them in town, when people come up, I can relate to them. You got, I think the next person that's even there has been here seventeen years. You know, uh, you can't come in, you can't come in here and buy your way into Santa Fe, and that's what a couple of people tried to do in the selection.
Gotcha.
But that's not me. I'm running here solely on the merits of just, uh, we've got a good thing going right now, I don't want to keep it going that way. We need a strong city council. Santa Fe is on the brink of, man, Santa Fe's just on the brink of blowing up. Uh, there's a couple of big developments that if they come in, it is gonna change Santa Fe. And you want, the Santa Fe's not gonna be the same in five years, and I want to be on that city council, you know? And plus I want to be on city council for the fiftieth anniversary of Santa Fe.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, uh, my neighborhood in Houston.
But I, that's all I can tell you, I'm trying hard and, you know, the people know me, uh, no, I'm not gonna lie to them, I'll tell them the truth as I know it. It might not be what they like, you know, it might be what they like, but.
You sound like a straight shooter to me, you sound just like my uncle. You sound just like my uncle, the, like, the, the sound of your voice, the manners in which you speak, and, and, and the, the intent behind it all, reminds me of my uncle, like, big time, and he's a straight shooter, you don't like it, then tough shit, you know?
Yeah, what you gonna do?
Exactly.
It's gotta be the one way or the other, you know?
Right.
You know, we can try to get it to a happy medium, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And where everybody gets happy, you know, that's not gonna happen all the time.
No, it's, it's impossible.
Just how, how everything is, it's not gonna happen all the time, you're not gonna make everybody happy. But you can give them a straight answer, that's for sure.
Right, well Rusty, I appreciate you man, you have a great-
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice message system for, at the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press one for more options.
Hi Crystal, my name is Aaron, I'm with the Constitutional News Network and I'm calling to ask a couple of questions about the election, tomorrow being the last day for the city council election. If you can, please give me a call, uh, I would greatly appreciate it, um, again, my name is Aaron, thank you and have a great night. Y'all don't get my number. Some of y'all got it. Voicemail. What's that mean? Onto Ryan McCamey. Eight, three, two. I just said it out loud. Well, I had to edit that out. That's fine.
Hello?
Hi, my name is Aaron, is this Ryan?
This is Ryan.
Hi Ryan, my name's Aaron, I'm with the Constitutional News Network and I would, if you had a moment, I'd like to talk to you about the upcoming election, uh, tomorrow's the last day I believe for the city council vote.
Yes, sir.
Would you happen to have a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Fantastic, um, I just got a couple of simple questions. What makes you the right pick for this position?
Uh, well, I, I believe I'm the right pick because I, I served my country in the military, uh, for fourteen years, I, I know what sacrifice is and I know, uh, what, what needs, what sacrifices need to be made in order to make this city run better.
Well, thank you for your service, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, and there's talks of, um, property taxes increasing and there's a big issue with that. Is there a way that, um, the city can help residents kind of, not necessarily get rid of some of that cost or to eat that cost, but help bring property taxes to where they're not rising to the point to where it's, um, taxing people out of their homes?
Uh, really the only way that we're gonna be able to, um, to alleviate some of that property tax burden is by bringing in business. We need bigger businesses that we can get more sales tax from, and that way we can take some of the burden off of the, the population.
Excellent, um, word is, is a few developers that are looking to develop in the Santa Fe area, um, how can, how can this, how can Santa Fe entice them? To, to come build here, come, come work with our community?
Uh, Santa Fe has plenty of property and it's beautiful property, I don't know if you've been to Santa Fe, but the land is, the area's beautiful, it's a small town feel, we, we're community, we love each other here, we try to take care of each other, we come together through adversity, to be able to try to make the place better.
Yeah, I actually have been to Santa Fe, um, I grew up in Houston, so we, we do a lot of fishing up and down the coast, you know, Toledo bend, at the co, at the border of Louisiana, so we've been all around, um, Conroe, I mean, just family in Conroe, family in, family in Umbold and Katy, I mean, um, Pasadena, like, everywhere out there is, the family's pretty much in every small town you could think of.
Oh, yes, sir.
So, alright, well that's pretty much all I had, uh, I do appreciate your time.
No problem.
I wish everyone was as forthcoming and willing to talk, unfortunately, I hasn't, hasn't been that way, but you know, um.
I think everybody's starting to get some of the jitters with tomorrow coming up, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's why I wait to call last minute, um, a lot of it is, they've had enough time to think about it and now it's time to kind of sit and what, what can I do different, like where, the mind always wants to go negative, yeah. Exactly, I want to think negatively, like, could I, I could have done more, well what is it, we could do more, you know, and what are the key points? And from what I'm hearing from people, the key points is, you know, taxes and business, so, um.
I mean, the, the way the city's grown, we're growing and there's nothing we can do to stop it from happening and, uh, we, the taxes have to increase to cover all the, the new expenditures, now whether we take that from property tax or we get new businesses in that we can, you know, gain from that, that sales tax, that's gonna be one of the things I'm gonna try to help steer the city towards.
Excellent, yeah, road maintenance alone is-
That was my big, my, my whole thing is about infrastructure, we can't bring in thousands of new people if we don't have the roads, the utilities, even the schools.
Right.
The room there, yeah.
Yeah, well, Ryan, I appreciate it, good luck and I look forward to talking to you again soon.
Alright, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you man, have a great night.
You too.
Bye bye. Alright, Ryan McCamey, everybody. Cool, I, I like people that want to talk, so that's two that have talked, one didn't answer and one hung up on me. I'll let y'all figure out which one it is here in a minute. Alright, let's see here. I'm not gonna say this phone number out loud, I liked it in the last one, uh. Oh man, oh man, look, I'm old, I'm old. This is Terry O'Connell, Terry O'Connell, everybody.
Hello?
Hi, my name is Aaron, is this Terry?
Yes, it is.
Hi Terry, my name's Aaron, I'm with the Constitutional News Network and I was wondering if you had just a couple of minutes to talk about the election that tomorrow being the last day, uh, wonder if you just had a couple of minutes to talk about it?
Absolutely.
Alright, I just got a few questions, they're pretty simple, I've asked, so far I've asked a few people that, and gotten some answers. Um, first is, what makes you the right posi, person for this position?
I care passionately for my community, I don't have an axe to grind, I'm not mad at anybody, I just want to be a voice for my neighbors and be one of the five people that decides the things that are important to our community.
Right, yeah, the, the bone to pick, axe to grind is, is a, it's pretty prevalent everywhere and it's nice when people can just, look, we're people, we got a job to do, let's do it, instead of, I want my rule, I want my policy or my procedure to go into place, um, which is what I-
I also have many years of leadership experience, uh, my, mine is in economics and, uh, I feel like, uh, I'm the right person for the job.
Alright, well speaking of economics, um, I know there's a lot of contention about property taxes. What can the city council and what can the, the people of Santa Fe do to reduce or eat, not necessarily eat the cost within the city, but help property taxes stop from rising so much?
We need to attract businesses that pay sales tax, that's all there is to it, because we need industry here that can take the load off of our homeowners. No matter what we do with our sales tax rate, if, if we don't have people that come in here that are industry that pay a lot of sales tax, then it's, it's on the homeowner's back and that's bad, that's bad for the homeowners. Some people have been here a really long time and they can't afford anymore, they can't afford what they're paying now, let alone having to pay more. So, uh, a big, huge part of the burden is also on the appraisal district, because it seems like they just keep raising the values of our homes and that's very difficult on some people.
That leads me to, I actually have two more questions that directly feed off of what you just said. So with the appraisal district, I have, I know my home values increased a lot where I live, I'm up in, up, I'm, I'm, I can't talk. I'm up in Ohio, Northwest Ohio, and our property tax for my house, my value's gone up about fifty percent over the last three years.
That's ridiculous.
Yes, it's, it's incredible, and we're in a community that has a lot of land, a lot of farmland, much, it's much like Santa Fe. It's right on, it's right on the outskirts of a good sized city and people want to move out of those, like, I moved out of the east side of Toledo into Oregon for a reason, less crime, better schools, the, the whole nine yards. And that's why people want to go to Santa Fe, I've been to Santa Fe, I grew up in Houston, I know like all those cities all around, within probably two hours of Texas, I've spent a lot of time in, or two hours of Houston, I've spent a lot of time in, um, family all over the place too. So seeing these small towns like, like Santa Fe, um, like even, even Conroe and Umbold, uh, Katy, Katy for instance, Katy's growing big time too. Uh, to see all these different places grow, do you think the appraisal district is making a proper assessment of these homes' values? Or do you think they might just be bumping it just to increase income?
That's a question that I, I don't have enough research on to ask, because this, you know, the city is not a part of the appraisal district. This, you know, the appraisal district is their own entity.
Right.
So I don't have enough information about that, because, um, you know, the state gets the appraisal district money.
Right.
You know, the state gets that money, and so, uh, man, that's, I, I really don't know, I, I, I don't know if, if they're fair or not. Uh, I just know that people that are on fixed incomes, when they, uh, and, and, and a lot of people, their taxes rates are frozen. You know, their tax, once you get to a certain age, you know, certain parts of your taxes are frozen. However, it's, uh, you know, when, when you're on social security or disability or whatever, anything extra is tough. And, uh, so I, I, I really, really don't have an answer to that question, because to me, you know, yes, you want your house to appraise if you're ready to sell it, but most of these people, like me, I will never sell this house. My husband and I are thrilled to be here and we don't, we're not selling it, so we don't, we don't want our house to be appraised high where we have to pay a ridiculous amount of taxes, so that, uh, that. Who is your subscriber base with the, the, the news source that you are?
Uh, it's, it's, it's all over the place, um, a lot of us are, we're different individuals based out of the different parts of the country, like, you know, Houston area, Galveston, um, Chicago, Ohio, it's, most of it is people that are the home buying age. Most of us are, that might, watch my stuff and, you know, and, and look into our stuff is like twenty-five to forty-five.
Okay, okay.
Which, which is why, by property taxes is such a big thing for me and property value. Uh, myself, having an issue here where I live with our property taxes, they haven't gone up a lot, but our home values are going up. And when they come do a new assessment, they're, it's gonna, it's gonna go through the roof, which is why we picked the town we live in versus one of the other four that we were looking at is, it's got an affordable tax rate and good schools, good neighborhoods. Uh, we, we live in a nice quiet, our neighborhood's two streets long, it's actually like only one and a half blocks. Um, but it's two streaks, so technically it's four blocks long, but there's only houses on, you know, one and a half blocks. So, um, it's a nice quiet neighborhood, we're off to the side, people forget about us because it's a train track, if there's a train there, you go around, you don't even go past our neighborhood, if there's no train, you want to hurry up and get over there before the train shows up, so. I dated a girl-
To the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I dated a girl in this neighborhood twenty-five years ago and I forgot about the neighborhood, so.
Yeah. Um, it's, uh, it's, Santa Fe's a beautiful place to live, um, I lived in Jamaica Beach on Galveston Island on the west end and came here by accident, um, my late husband was a Vietnam veteran and he was ill and could no longer walk up the stairs, so we were just gonna move here to a flat ground house until he got better and he did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so, uh, I didn't want to go back to Jamaica Beach after I lived here. This, Santa Fe reminds me, I grew up in Houston too, I'm a native Houstonian.
Oh nice.
I grew up on the far north side, uh, uh, far north side, the Alden area, which is now Greenspoint. And, uh, you know, it was the country when I grew up there, it's not that, it's far from that now, but I, I barrel raced, I rode the rodeo, I lived on rural property at that time, uh, and that, this is what Santa Fe reminds me of. And I think that we need to encourage the kind of, we need to attract the kind of businesses that are not only tax-based businesses, but are family-friendly businesses, so that we don't have to drive to Alvin, or we don't have to drive to Texas City, or Galveston, or some, we need to keep those tax dollars in our community.
And that was actually where I was going to, that was my last question, um, is that like, what would, what kind of, what would you do to attract it? Like, what kind of businesses are we looking at, which you nailed it, um.
One of, one of the best investments Santa Fe ever made is they gave Tractor Supply a fifty thousand dollar tax credit to come here. Our biggest sales tax that we get in Santa Fe is Tractor Supply. That was the best investment Santa Fe made, because, um, anyway, it was, uh, I mean, that was, that was amazing. And we have a lot of businesses coming here now, there's a lot of people that don't want to see Santa Fe grow, but the thing is, it's growing. And either we can choose the type of, uh, you know, direct and attract the type of businesses we want, or it's gonna grow anyway.
Yeah.
So we need to be able to, uh, direct, attract and, and do those things that, that are gonna help our homeowners with sales tax.
Absolutely, well, that pretty much hits everything on the head, yeah, I, um, that I've got, I grew up at Jones Road in nineteen sixty, um.
Oh wow.
Uh, Cypress Creek High, High School, my, my neighborhood, um, directly behind our house was a field. And then, it was just a field, and then behind that field was where, um, Blile Junior High had their school mascot, the, the Blile Brahma, and-
I know exactly, I lived in, uh, I lived in Ravensway, and my daughter still lives there now.
Oh nice.
Moved, uh, from the Alden area, Ravensway is, is, and my, my father that passed in May, he lived, uh, Cypress North Houston, in Telge Road. Uh, Ravensway is Cypress North Houston and Huffmeister.
Yep, we, we lived it on, in Applewood.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Wow, world.
Yeah, right, just, we're states away, but yet we're, we, at some point in time, I'm pretty sure we were really close to one another, um.
So you're in Ohio now, right?
Yeah, I'm in Northwest Ohio now.
Okay.
I was orig, I was originally born up here.
My now husband grew up in Kentucky and so, uh, not far, uh, what is that big amusement park we took the grandkids to?
Cedar Point?
Golly, it's, uh-
Is it in Ohio? Was it in Ohio?
Yeah, it's in Ohio.
Cedar Point out in Sandusky?
Uh, it's, no, it's called, he just walked outside, but anyway, uh, it reminded me of Astroworld when I was growing up.
Oh man, Astroworld and the Ultra Twister, that was my ride.
Oh yeah, yeah.
That was my ride.
It's there, um, we cross over in Kentucky into Ohio and it's right there.
Oh, it's by Cincinnati?
Yeah, it's in Cincinnati.
Yeah, um, I know what it's called too.
We got there when it opened and left when it closed and I was like, wow. Well, what's the name of that, uh, Queens Island, Kings Island?
Kings Island, yep, yep.
That, I mean, uh, yeah.
That place is fantastic, I haven't been in a long time since I was a teenager, that's twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, I get it.
Oh man.
Yeah, Ryan's texting me telling me he just talked to you.
Good, you guys are all communicating, I'm just going down the list, I got, I got two more to call.
Ryan and I, um, have consorted with each other, we both decided if one of us makes the runoff and the other one does not, then we will support each other, he's a, he's a great guy, he's a five-time veteran and, uh, I've, uh, my husband and I have become friends with him and his boss Anthony McEluso, who owns the gun vault where he works.
Oh nice.
And so, if nothing else comes from this race, uh, uh, you know, we've gained friends and, uh, that, there's nothing like that, they're, they're good people.
That's absolutely a wonderful approach, you know, if I don't win, at least I gained a friend out of it, you know? That's, that's awesome, that's fantastic, I appreciate that kind of attitude and sentiment. That's, that's awesome. That's fantastic. I appreciate that kind of attitude and sentiment. It really, it, it shows. More, more so for me, it shows that someone's like a human versus. I just wanna be on city council because, you know, I want, you know, I, I'm authoritarian, I want the power.
Because it pays a lot, there is no pay.
Right, yeah. The mayor, the mayor for Toledo, Ohio makes less than I made on medical leave. Which wasn't a lot. So, um, he does not make a lot of money.
It's a volunteer position, so there's, there's no money involved. Uh, and, you know, and we are a little Santa Fe Texas. But I care about my neighbors and I care about my community, and that's, that's, that's my purpose for running. I, I don't have any ulterior motives. I don't wanna be president, you know, none of that.
City council, I'm good.
I wanna help people, so.
Yeah, that's actually, uh, my goal here, probably like next, within the next seven years is, uh, start pushing towards city council for where I'm at. I'm, I'm forty-three. Um, I'm a, I'm a civil rights activist as well. Which is kinda how I got put onto Santa Fe because of the video with Tony. Um, and then watching Facebook and other things like, okay, well, let's see what the people in Santa Fe are like. And.
Are you talking about the video of Tony when he was fire mar- uh, fire marshal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seeing that, I wanted to see how the other people that were running, um, acted.
Know him at all. Uh, I really, I really, I didn't know any of the people except for Anthony, which is Ryan's boss before this happened. Because Anthony and I serve on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And so, but, but besides, so that's how I got to know Ryan, who, you know, my opponent. I don't know any of the other, uh, players in the race. Uh, I've met Bubba Janette and his wife and his son, and they were very nice to me. But I don't know them.
He's actually next on my list.
I'm sorry?
He's next on my list to call too.
Yeah, he was, they, they see, he served prior on co- uh, council. And they were very nice to me. They seemed like very nice people. But, uh, again, the only one I really know is Ryan, and I've only met him because the way our little tents are set up next to each other. And we commiserate with each other at the polls, you know, in early voting, and, uh, they're just good people.
That's fantastic to hear. Well, I appreciate your time, Terry. I thank you so very much. Um, I'm.
Again?
Aaron, A-A-R-O-N. And, uh, it's the Constitutional News Network. Uh, we're on Facebook. A lot of our stuff is police and government accountability. And, um, we've been reaching out more into political, um, areas, you know. Tarrant County Appraisal District, there's an issue out there, um, Fort Worth. Um, the city of Houston has a, a ban on feeding homeless people unless it's right in front of City Hall. But yet, the size of Houston, for people, for homeless people to get there to eat, it's unrealistic. So, um, people.
I am homeless people and she's, you know, she does it, she doesn't care.
They're ticketing people. Well, it's a, a very expensive ticket. Um, one guy beat his and they decide, you know what, it's, he's not guilty. Another guy got convicted and he got a dollar fine. Typically, it's.
Constitutional News Network, is what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, we're on, we're on Facebook, website, um. On, on Facebook, it's got a circle with a bunch of, the words are going up, down, left, right, like it's black background with red and brown. There's a couple of different ones that are similar in names, so, um, Constitutional News Network. My name is Aaron. My YouTube channel is Great Lakes Audits. We're a group of YouTubers that come together, um, for a, a like-minded goal, and that's the betterment of our communities. Whether it be through me getting arrested to expose something, or conversations like this that we can have that show what kind of people, um, should be in positions like this. Absolutely will. Um, there's a lot of stuff going, it's very, very bad. Very, very bad.
I love, I love my community, uh, here in Santa Fe. That's what I got to say about that.
Santa Fe's beautiful. I love Santa Fe, Santa Fe, San Luis Pass, um, like, I, I just, everything. I, I, I just, I miss Texas, I guess. You know, it's like really bad. Everything within a couple hours of Houston, I just, I loved everything out there. The fishing, the atmosphere, the farms, the ranches. I just, I really miss it. You know, you don't get a lot of that up here in the snow. Um.
No.
You get, you get a polluted lake.
I, I love to travel, but I'll never leave Texas.
Oh.
Tex- I'm a Texas girl, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I miss it. My wife's like, no, I don't wanna move to Texas. Uh, okay, I guess we'll stay here in Ohio, so.
All right, well, it was really nice hearing from you, Aaron, and I appreciate that.
Absolute pleasure, Terry. You have a great night.
Uh-huh.
Thanks, bye-bye. Terry O'Connell, everybody. Uh, conversations like this is what we need to be having with people. All right, talk to them. Ask them some questions. If they hang up on you, go to the next one. I just exposed the one that hung up on you that's obviously not transparent, right? Now, Tony Daughfin probably is a little upset because of the video that came out, probably getting a bunch of phone calls. But you should give everyone a chance. We get to redress our grievances, and if he's gonna be on city council. He's going to be getting redressed for one thing or another. He can't just be a bully, get out of here, you can't do this, you can't do that. Listen to the people, talk to the people. That's your job. Well, that's what you volunteer for. Uh, two, two more ago. This is Ron Bubba Janet. Ron Bubba Janet. I will not say your phone number outli- out loud like I did the previous, two ago, whatever. It's not a pound, it's a nine. I could say that, see here. All right, let's call Bubba. Should I call, call him Bubba or Ron? Bubba. Everyone calls him Bubba, right? It's two people said it so far. Hope he, hope he answers. Oh, man.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system for.
Yeah, we don't need to worry about his phone number, don't need to worry about his.
Please record your message. When you have finished recording, you may hang up or press one for more options.
Hi, Bubba, my name is Aaron. I'm with the Constitutional News Network, and I am just calling to talk to you for a couple minutes. Had a few simple questions about the election, uh, tomorrow being the last day for the election for city council. Wonder if you could just spare a moment. My phone number is, I grew up in Houston, spent a lot of time out near Santa Fe and Conroe and San Luis Pass. And fishing, hunting, all that good stuff, so if you have a few minutes, won't take long, I would appreciate the call. Thank you and have a great night. Oh, my shoulder's killing me. This is my bad shoulder, guys. I've had multiple surgeries. It's held together with like sticks and glue and gum and hopes and prayers, so. Last one to call. This is an office number, not a cell phone. The other ones were all cell phone numbers. Alright, yeah. Uh, but she is self-employed, so maybe this goes to her home. Or maybe it is her cell phone and she uses it for business. Aaron with the Constitutional News Network, having a question about tomorrow's election. What if my name was longer than, what, six syllables, seven syllables?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Aaron. I'm with the Constitutional News Network. Is this Christine?
Why are you calling?
Well, there's a. Oh, I am so sorry. If it's too late, I, I have no problem, um, hanging up. I was just, uh, calling about the election that ends tomorrow, if you wanted, if you had a couple of minutes.
You're calling about the.
City council election?
That's running.
Yes.
Uh, uh-huh, and you run articles in what paper?
It's the Constitutional News Network. We're online-based. Facebook, our web, we have Facebook website, um, YouTube channel.
I see. And you're conservative or left-wing?
I don't, whoever is best interest for me is who I vote for. I don't care one way, I'm not left, I'm not right. I'm all about just the facts of the facts and the news of the news. Um, I try not to put a political spin on anything. I'm, I'm very much a put it out raw kinda guy. Um, you will never, you won't see my political swing on anything, I can promise you that.
Okay.
There was this, there was a situation with Tony Daughfin that brought Santa Fe to my attention. Um, having grown up in Houston and spent a lot of time out in the areas around Houston. I spent, I spent a lot of time in Santa Fe, um, San Luis Pass, Conroe, uh, Texas City, League City, uh, Galveston. So, um, it, it kinda piqued my interest of what happened with him at the, when he was a fire marshal. And so I've called, I've spoken with, uh, Rusty and Ryan and Terry already, and just asked a few questions. It's pretty simple. Um, nothing that's politically dividing, you know, I don't care about how you feel about Biden or Trump, that's, I'm, I wanna talk about Santa Fe and just Santa Fe.
Uh-huh.
Would you be interested, would you be interested in a short conversation? I really only have like three questions.
Um. Yeah, I just don't, um, you know, I've been warned that different entities will twist words.
I can promise you.
I don't like to play those games.
I can promise you, if, if this gets put out there, it'll be put out from start to finish, raw, no cuts, no edits. You have, you have my word, and this is, and this is my personal cell phone number. This is not the cell phone number that I give out to people that wanna call me with tips and stuff. And if I do put something out there and it's not the truth, feel free to put my phone number out there for the whole world to see and call me and, and address their grievances.
Okay, and where do you live? What is this number from?
I live in Toledo, Ohio, but I, I grew up down south.
Oh, I see. So are you the one that did the YouTube video?
No, I, I am not, no.
Tell me?
No.
Oh, okay.
Um, that was, that was the guy, I believe it's Constitutional News Net, no, um, Good Citizen News, that's what it was. But that, that brought my attention to the election in Santa Fe. Which is why I'm calling so late, because I'm just now, like, I just recently heard about it. And I just wrote the numbers down and the order they were on the list on the, um, the website on application, that's all that was.
And Florida, you said?
I'm in.
On the list from the application?
No, no, on your, on the website for Santa Fe, there's a list of the applications for, um, city council, and that's how I got your phone number off of that. Yours is just the bottom, bottom of the list.
What number did you call?
I got the eighth.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Correct numbers, uh-huh, okay. And so what is it that you're interested in?
Well, I have asked everyone this question. What makes you the right fit for this position?
Uh, because I care a lot about our well-being in our town. And, um, I feel like I have a very good, uh, value set. Very strong set of morals and values, and, um, and. I want to look out for the best interests of the citizens who have been here, who have lived here, grown up here. Um, you know, they've, they've pretty much put their whole heart and soul into this town. Um, and to their homes, and then to their children that go to the schools here, and, and, um. And the, the, the big thing with all the development and the growth is. We have to make sure to not, um, let money get in the way, uh, from big developers and so on. Uh, that could potentially, uh, flood out the current residents or, um, flood, flood out the current businesses. That are, uh, you know, are small businesses and, um, have a lot of talent in this town, believe it or not. And, uh, and so I wanna preserve that.
Yeah, you actually led right into the next question.
City, we don't need another Clear Lake, because we already have those things.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, you actually just segue right into the next question. Um, with, you know, businesses coming in and pushing people out, um. I'm assuming that's by tax, you're thinking like taxation, like overtaxing because the rising cost in taxes, which. How do you recoup costs for businesses coming in, more roads, more schools, more everything? Is you have to raise taxes one way, um, or the other is to tax, get businesses to come in and have a taxable base. Um, how can Santa Fe help bring in a taxable base?
How can Santa Fe help what?
Bring in, um, more tax-based businesses.
Um. Well, encouraging the small businesses that we do have rather than watch them go under. Because, um, they, you know, they do bring in revenue here. Uh, educating the, the other consumers. Um, even when they order stuff online, uh, if it's delivered to the, an address in Santa Fe. You know, whether it's Amazon or, you know, a small retailer, what, it doesn't matter, um. Uh, anyway, it doesn't matter. Um, if it's delivered here, then we get to keep the, the sales tax. So, I mean, there's a lot of different ways, um, to bring in revenue. Uh, the EDC, which is the Economic Development, uh, Commission, which is, uh, they get point five percent of all sales tax. That's not the only way for us to generate income. Uh, there's, there's other things that can be done, but, uh, you know, we just have to get creative about it. And, and driving in, uh, regardless, when, when homes are built. Or when businesses are built, or whatever, we really need to think long and hard about, uh, the long-term effects of that particular building. And make sure that we keep the requirements where they don't, uh, create a big, um. Uh, I don't know which one to call it, but the, you know, they create these enormous concrete. Swimming pools that flood out the people around them.
Yeah.
And, um, and that's not, because the, the residents grow to resent, resent that. And constantly living in fear that your house is gonna be flooded or whatever. And I mean, I'm sure the insurance companies and FEMA doesn't like that either.
No, no.
At the end of the day, uh, FEMA's the one who has to pay for it, which is our government.
Yeah, yeah, and the insurance companies don't wanna spend money when they're trying to make money.
Right, right. They don't want claims.
Yeah, it's a loss. You've, you've pretty much hit everything.
Another Hurricane Harvey.
Yeah, you, oh my goodness, yeah, yeah. You hit everything on the head right there without even having to ask the questions, and that's what I like about these kinds of conversations. We can just, a nice little talk and, um, I do appreciate you asking the questions ahead of time, like at the beginning, the vetting, the questioning. It's important to do that because you never know who's calling. So much information is public out there, and you don't, you never know one way or the other. I do have to, I do, I am making one edit, and that's when I said your phone number. I'm gonna cut that portion out. I'll leave, I'll have the first number and the last number, so you know there's, like, the first number and the last number. So you know, that's just the phone number that was cut out. Um, but yeah, it's, it's important to have these conversations because so many people, oh, no problem, that's my pleasure. It's, it's a sign of respect. You know, you give me the time, I absolutely will, you know, respect, respect that, um. When, so many people are scared to have these conversations with people, you know, it doesn't need to be someone that takes time to ask, call a question and maybe put a video or an article or something out. It takes time as a citizen to sometimes get the nerve up to ask these questions. And I've always been an, an, in-your-face, straight shooter. I want the answer. I don't want any fluff. I don't care what your political views are. I just wanna know, how can we help my city grow, or this, or Santa Fe grow in a safe manner that doesn't put out the residents that have been there for forty, fifty. Uh, uh, you know, years, you know? Um, the fiftieth anniversary is coming up soon. Yeah, exactly. You know, you're sixty, seventy years old on a fixed income, the last thing you want is your property taxes to double. Because it's hard enough for people that are on a fixed income to make their bills as it is. I've lived through it, I, I know it, you know, medical disability. You know, scraping by, you know, on the, the, the verge of foreclosure, you know, because, you know, I'm sick or I'm hurt, you know, and we can't, we can't make it without it. So imagine not having that, the choice or the option, being able to get off of medical leave and going back to making your full pay. Just being stuck at that reduced income or that minimized income is, is hard enough as it is, so.
Right.
And that, I find that important, and everyone that I've spoken to, um, Crystal and Ron didn't answer, Tony hung up on me. But Rusty, at the very beginning, just asked in the same way I asked you, hey, got a couple minutes to talk about this. Click, hang up. Um, but Ru- Rusty, Ryan, Terry, yourself, all been fantastic. I appreciate you all. Um, nice cordial conversations, asking questions, that's what you guys are there for.
Thought with the taxes is that a lot of that is not even on us. Um, a lot of that has to do with Texas as a whole.
Gotcha.
So, you know, whatever happens above the, above us, not you, 'cause you don't live here, but.
Right.
Above, you know, our little town and our county, um, has decided way, way above what we can. And, you know, what we can do there, not even me, um, but we as a whole is vote. And get involved and seek, or what, what we need to, you know, the, the. People that trickle it up, upstream or whatever to, you know, the habit and the rest of them. Because at the end of the day, they're gonna be making decisions that affect what we do. Like, for example, with the Woodlands, uh, property north of Houston around Conroe. Um, they had requirements of, uh, maintaining. Um, they had requirements of, uh, maintaining the trees in a certain way because that's what they're known for, right? The Woodlands.
Right.
Hello, Wood. And, you know, so we had talked about that with Santa Fe, but unfortunately, our hands are tied because Texas passed some sort of law about, uh, what can be, you know, what kinda stipulations we can put on builders here. So, that's, that's an example of, you know, we do what we can. And, and then the rest, people need to get involved and have a voice.
Absolutely. Talk to your state representatives, you know? It's important.
And, and, and really it comes down to agreement because if people are gonna gripe about the hot temperatures and all that stuff, well, then we need to do our part and stop cutting down all the trees. So.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Area loudest.
Yep. My, um, I can, I can.
asphalt does not.
No, no, and I could, um, a little anecdotal story here. My, a few weeks ago, there was a tornado, um, in Point Place, Ohio. My daughter and I actually drove through it in the truck. Um, we were on a bridge getting on the highway and it hit us on the ramp on the bridge getting, so like, I floored it. But it's my dad's, my dad, my stepmom and my stepsister's neighborhood. And this is a, an old community full of trees. They're shallow-rooted trees, but they took a direct hit. And I, I cannot even begin to explain, express just how many trees disappeared. Imagine taking away four of your fingers off your hand. Doesn't, doesn't even look like a hand anymore. Just looks like, does, looks foreign. And that's how it is there. It was a nice shaded area. Now we're having, you know, a hundred-plus degree heat index days and people are like, man, my bill's going up crazy. Well, yeah, you don't have that tree coverage. It's, it's, it's incredible. Just what a tree will do. My dad's tree is sixty foot tall.
Bill goes up.
Oh, man, yep.
For electricity goes up, you know, but.
Yeah.
Things wanna talk about, uh, that.
Yep.
Plant some trees, hello. See in China, they plant trees. They have entire programs. In one of our countries that are not really our friends.
Yeah, very pollution-heavy country too, and they're doing stuff to help the environment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Beijing has an entire program about planting trees.
I'm gonna, I did not know that.
Actually got fined twenty-one thousand dollars for pr- for pruning his tree.
What?
Granted, it was in whatever, yeah. I just happened to read it like last night.
Well, I'm gonna look that up.
Dollars, because it's not, it's not American money, right?
Yeah, it's a yen, the yen.
Yeah.
Yeah, Germany, it's a crime to, if you cut down a tree. My dad was an MP in the army and they went on, they had to go arrest, um, some people because they went on stupid stuff. Knock, knocked down a tree in the woods or something. And if they ever did like a military drill out there, um, the same thing would happen, so. But that's everything, that's everything I've got. Christine, I thank you so much. You hit everything on the, right on the nail, the, the nail right on the head. Um, my phone just gave me an alert that my recording is, time is up. Uh-oh. I think I'm out of memory. I have, I have like twenty, I have twenty gigs. I should have plenty of space. Well, Christine, good, good luck. I, I wish you good luck and, um, I, I look forward to another conversation in the future if you're up for it.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Good evening.
Thanks, bye-bye.